You'll probably be on by the time we get to business. So with that, it is 6:00 PM. I'd like to call this City Council meeting for the City of Montgomery, Texas to order. This evening, we'll kick off this meeting with an invocation. TJ Wilkerson, would you provide that for us, please?
Yes, surely. Now, we come this afternoon with humble hearts involved here. So I would come thanking you for the many opportunities that you have granted us. But we pray for the sick and shedding that's here in Montgomery. We pray for the one that have lost loved ones, Lord. We pray that you bring them comfort and peace and understanding. God bless us as we go along tonight in this meeting. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right, Pledge of Allegiance, we'll begin with the US flag. I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God,
under God,
indivisible, where liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag. Honor the Texas
Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas. One say, under God, one and indivisible.
Mayor, the city attorney has joined us.
Fantastic, thank you. So we have full quorum. And Mr. Petrov, welcome. All right, the first item, I do not believe we have anything for the citizen and visitors forum. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay, the first item of business on our agenda this evening is the consent agenda. Item number one, matters related to the approval of minutes of the March night 2021 public hearing and regular meeting. Number two, consideration of possible action regarding completion of a one-year warranty period for the construction of water and drainage improvements on Dr. Martin Luther King Dr. Drive Phase Two project. Number three, consideration of possible action regarding completion of a one-year warranty period for the FEMA Akon Creek Water Sanitary Sewer and Storm Sewer Repairs Project. Counsel, you may take these individually or all together. What is your pleasure?
I say taken together, if that's okay, Mayor.
Uh-huh.
Second.
All those in favor of the consent agenda, consent agenda, together, say aye.
Aye.
All the opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the consent agenda as presented. Next item of business on your agenda, consideration of possible action. Item number four, consideration of possible action regarding the annual financial audit for the year ending on September 30th, 2020, as prepared by Belk Harris Pachek Pachetic, I know I screwed that up, sorry, LLP.
That's right. And I'm Darla Dear, I'm here to present your annual financial report. So, good evening. And I'd also like to thank Anthony and Susan and everybody at the city that helped to gather the information this year, you know, pandemic disaster. That's not the exact time that you want your auditor showing up to do audit work. But they did a great job on getting us all the information. Lot of electronic data going back and forth, but that is great, giving us everything that we needed to get the audit done. So I'll, basically, I'll go through about the three most important pages on the audit, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. So I'm gonna give you your, the packet number, and so if you'll flip to page 29 in your packet, this is page one of our report. And this is our opinion letter. You've received an unmodified opinion. That is the highest level of assurance that you can receive, that there are no material misstatements, and that all disclosures that have been made in your report with generally accepted accounting principles. So, great job on that. Next, we're gonna flip to the page 50 in your packet. Now, from the city's perspective, this is probably the single most important page to the city out of your audit. It's where we have your revenues and expenditures for the year, and then the summary of your fund balance after a year end. So, general fund being predominantly the most important out of the city's funds. We'll look at those revenues and expenditures. So you'll see your total revenues, a little over 4.1 million. Total expenditures, a little over 3.5 million. That gave you an excess of revenues over expenditures, had a little transfer out. So the net change in your fund balance for the year was $473,325. So nice little increase on your fund balance, leaving you with an ending fund balance of $1,724,162. So, great job on that, nice, healthy fund balance going down there. So, well, we take that as a win, especially this year. With the pandemic, we knew there was a lot of extra costs for everybody, so it was a great job. Now, we are gonna flip to page 87. That's where we, and this 87 in your packet, which is number 59 on our audit page. And this is where we compare the revenue and your expenditures to the budget amounts, that final budget amount. So if you look on the total revenues, you had a positive variance of 85,000, almost 86,000. And then down at your total expenditures, you had another positive variance of the 491,000, a little over 49,1,491,000, leaving you a positive on that variance. Net wise with the transfers out and in, that left you with a net positive variance of $576,525. So, great job on that positive variance on your budget. Now, that's basically the three most important pages out of your audit, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might know.
I have a question. Is, so this is, this audit, it covers the general fund, capital funds, police, MEDC, Public Works, all of our entities?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I thought I read that, but I wanted to make sure.
Yes, covers all the funds, the business funds with the utility, that also.
Okay, thank you. We're sitting pretty. We, it was a good year for us, even through one of the hardest years, probably, for a lot of cities. So we're very grateful and thankful.
Very difficult for a lot of folks, and that was nice, positive increase on the fund balance, so.
Sure. And I contribute that to be in, we're now a city with a lot of hospitality. We're a lot of essentials, like restaurants and grocery stores and gas, and little retail. So we were able to stay open to a degree. And I think a lot of people supported our businesses and stayed open, so that's clearly reflected.
That's great.
Yeah. No one else has any questions or comments? Okay. Then I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the audit as presented.
Second.
It has been moved as I said, that we accept the audit as presented. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the audit as presented, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the audit as presented. Item number five on your agenda. Consideration of possible action regarding the adoption of the following ordinance. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Montgomery, Texas, authorizing the insurance issuance of City of Montgomery, Texas, General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2021, specifying the terms and features of said bonds, establishing certain parameters for the sale of said bonds, and enacting provisions incident and related to the issuance, delivery, payment of, and security for such bonds.
Okay, and this item, the ordinance for this one came in late due to the time it took to prepare it. So it was received earlier today in City Hall, but did not make the packet. And we didn't want to send it out so late that everyone didn't have a time to fully review it. I do know, it was prepared by the city's attorney, Alan Petrov. And I'd just like to briefly mention, due to the low interest rates available on the market, the city has an opportunity to approve a refunding bond issue, which will allow the city to reissue the remaining debt at a lower interest rate and realize an overall savings. We have James Gillie of US Capital Advisors, who has worked with the city previously here tonight. And with that, James, I'll allow you to go ahead and explain this in greater detail.
Well, thank you. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Well, good, excellent. It's a pleasure to be with you on screen this evening. As Mr. Tram said, the city has the opportunity to achieve debt service savings on some of its outstanding debt. Two of the issuances from back in 2012, the city had two separate issuances that were issued in 2012. And those bonds together, they carry about an average interest rate of about 3.5%. And based on current market interest rates, we believe the city could refund or refinance. Refunding is a kind of a fancy term for refinance. So, we believe that the city could achieve debt service savings, could achieve a true interest cost of about 1.8%. So, we hope that, it looks like y'all could cut your borrowing rate just about in half. That would translate to total cash flow savings of approximately $578,000 over the course of the final maturity being in 2038. So that would translate to annual cash flow savings of somewhere around $32,000. So you'd be lowering your annual requirement by $32,000. This also translates on a present value, this is savings of about 10% on your outstanding debt. Now, the transaction that we're proposing would not extend the life of the debt. The final maturity on the 2012 is actually 2038. The maturity would not change. In fact, the average life would go down slightly, the average life of the bonds would go down slightly. We've factored in all the estimated costs of the transaction into these savings. And so this is net savings to the city. So this, we like to say that, you know, it sounds too good to be true, but this is just like picking up money off the ground. It's just, you're just taking advantage of low interest rates. And the, so the process that we're proposing would be, as your financial advisor, we would prepare offering documents, essentially a preliminary official statement, which is essentially a memorandum, is a perspective, is a prospectus for investors. We would publish and advertise the sale of these bonds to investors across the country. And we would, we would propose to sell the bonds in a competitive auction type, an auction type sale, where investors, underwriters across the country, as I said, would have the opportunity to compete to buy the city's bonds. And the underwriter that submits the lowest interest rate to the city would, would be awarded the bonds if the city, if the city so chose to do. Just a little bit of a background, the city is, I'm kind of wading into Mr. Petrov's territory here, but the city is authorized, has a legal authority to issue bonds for various purposes. One of those purposes is for refunding, is to achieve debt service savings. And so, the ordinance before your consideration today is what's known as a parameter refunding ordinance. And essentially, it preauthorizes us to move forward with preparations for the sale of the bonds. And it assigns, it designates authority to certain pricing officers, perhaps the mayor, the city administrator, the mayor pro tem, to, on the day of the sale, if the results of the sale meet certain minimum parameters that the council sets, then it authorizes those, the city officials to execute a certificate that issues the, effectively issues the bonds. So, in other words, the ordinance you're before you is asking for preauthorization to set minimum parameters. For example, minimum savings that you're willing to accept. If we do not meet those savings, you're under no obligation to issue the bonds, and the sale won't go through. So, this is, this is a common approach for a refunding of this type in our industry. It gives the city some flexibility with respect to the timing of the sale. And it is, because it does, it does not need to come back to council to approve the bond issuance. But, as I said, it does give flexibility with respect to timing in the event of adverse market movement. I hope, I'm not, it's kind of like drinking from a fire hose, I'm not, I don't understand the process. But Alan can certainly weigh in on some of the, some of the legal points that I've touched on. But essentially, this is a, this is an excellent opportunity for the city to to achieve, just to lower its annual obligation. We recently completed a very successful refunding for Montgomery, I'm sorry, Magnolia, right down the road. And they had a fantastic result, they had a similar, a similar maturity schedule, and they achieved similar savings of about 500, a little over $500,000. And they also did this, they completed this via a parameter refunding ordinance. So I, this time, out of respect for your time, I don't want to ramble on too much, but I'd be happy to entertain any questions. And if there's any challenging legal questions, we're gonna have to defer that to Mr. Petrov, so.
When are the parameters established tonight or during the course of your work with the city?
Tonight, we've proposed a minimum net present value savings of 3%. And I believe there may be some other stipulations, like a maximum par amount that the city, that the bonds would be allowed. There's a maximum maturity, a maximum final maturity, so you would not be extending the bonds. But those parameters would be set tonight.
Okay, what are your fees?
Our fees are, we have an existing contract with the city, it's based off of the principal amount. And I believe it's, our current estimates are just under 2% of the total borrowing amount. And we're paid on a contingent fee basis, so if the financing does not go through, we're not owed any fee. Okay.
And James, for the James, for the figures you stated earlier with regards to the expected savings, did you already factor your expenses into that?
Yes, that's correct. We factored all estimated costs of the transaction. Our fee as financial advisor, there'll be a fee for bond counsel, there's an attorney, the Texas Attorney General has a fee for review. There will be a, we're proposing a rating fee. We would, our plan would be to have the bonds rated by Standard and Poor's Rating Services. The city maintains an excellent AA rating. And I have every reason to believe that you would be able to achieve that again, based off of the excellent audit results this morning that we just heard. So those are some of the fees, there's again, we factored all of these estimated costs into these, into the savings that we presented.
So I heard 578,000 in savings over between now and 2038, as well as currently our bonds are at 3.5%, and that's going down to 1.8%, is that correct?
Those are our current estimates, yes, Mayor.
That's significant, that's good for us. I mean, what's, so what's the downside? Alan, is there a downside to this?
There is not a downside to this at all. Yeah, you know, it's like, it's like refinancing your house, you know, when interest rates go down, it's good to take advantage of that. Sometimes there is a disadvantage with refinancing your house, because you may have to take out a longer mortgage or things like that. But with the municipal finances, they're able to structure it, so your debt is not extended at all. In fact, what James said, it's gonna be a little bit shorter. So, you're, you're not stretching out any payments. You're lowering your interest rate, you're achieving a net present value savings. And to put it a little bit in perspective, you know, that the, what the market says is it's usually worth doing if you can achieve at least a 3% savings. And on, on this particular transaction, it's looking like the savings is gonna be in the range of 10%. So it's, it's definitely a good opportunity.
It's almost too good to be true, pinch me, I mean, that's a
Well, yeah, the, the interest rates that, you know, out of the Federal Reserve are, you know, some of the lowest we've ever had in history. And so, you know, it's, it's worth taking advantage of that.
So are we talking the timeframe? You said it won't go maturing at 2038? Is that bringing it down like a week or two from when it, or does it bring it down like a year or two? What's that timeframe like?
I'm, I'm sorry, I, early on, I said that the, the average life, the bonds is, the, the average life of the existing bonds would be reduced slightly. So the, it would go from, you know, 8.8, I think, 8.8 years to 8.7. But, but really, the, just to make it more clear, the final maturity on the, the 2012 bonds is March 1st of 2038. The structure we're proposing is that that final maturity would be the same March 1st of 2038.
Okay, so there is no difference in dates, but we have, but the upside is still going from 3.5 to 1.8 and 578,000. But 7, $578,000 in savings over between now and 2038.
Yes, that's correct.
Roughly a 32K cash flow every year, okay. Is there any gotchas, man, at all?
The, I will say, the only potential, the only downside, as you said, is we, is that, again, we would propose to have this rated, and that rating is going to get you, allow you to access the market at advantageous rates, that bond rating will let investors know, this is excellent paper, this is a really good credit. Montgomery's a very, very fast-growing, very desirable community. So if it's possible that if we went along in the process and conducted the bond, the bond rating conference call, at that point, the city would be obligated to pay that $15,000 rating fee, that's our estimate for that fee. But the, the risk is that we move forward, and for some reason, something happens in the market, and we're not able to achieve the minimum parameter savings, which I think is quite unlikely, then the city would be obligated to pay that. Typically, these fees are paid from the bond proceeds. However, if, if there were adverse market movements, the Standard and Poor's typically will let you, I guess, delay payment of that, of the rating fee in the event that we reschedule the bond sale. So that's, that's the, that is the risk, it'd be approximately a $15,000 rating fee if the, if the sale did not go through. So that you weigh that, the risk of having to pay that fee out of pocket versus the potential savings that you could achieve. And again, I think it's, I think it's unlikely that, that the market would take that drastic return in such a short period of time. I say that, even though I understand there's a lot of spending going on at the federal government, and that's not good for interest rates in the long term, but so the, just a little bit on the timing of this, we would propose a sale on about May 11th. And at that time, if the savings met the, were acceptable to the city, the transaction will close about 30 days later on June 11th.
So does that mean that we would say, yes, we'd like to refinance our debt services to 1.8? If we can get 1.6 or anything less than that, you would still do that? Or you just wait for the 1.8 marker, and then you activate or move forward? And, because if there's more goodness, obviously, if we want to do this, we would like more goodness, right?
Right. Well, what the parameter sets is, if it does not achieve at least this much savings, then the transaction doesn't go through. So anything above that, we certainly want as great a result for the city as possible.
Making sure, like, your fees, whatever the difference is, as we give those to you, you're being great at this. Okay.
So James is our advisor, what, what's the minimum parameter dollar savings you would recommend to the city of Montgomery? If I put it in the form of a motion?
Well, the parameter that Mr. Petrov has drafted, has specified a minimum of 3% savings. And anything, anything below that would not, would not be accepted. As Alan said earlier, that 3% savings is a pretty good benchmark, which is, says this is, this is a pretty good deal. So that's kind of a standard parameter that we like to set. But council can certainly set any parameter that it wishes. You could, you could leave it there, or you could change it if you'd like. But again, we, we want to get as great a result for the city as possible. So I'm not sure that that completely answered your question, but.
No, that, that gives me some, some good information.
Yeah, thank you.
If there's no further discussion, I would like to make a motion that we adopt an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Montgomery, Texas, authorizing the issuance of City of Montgomery, Texas, General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2021, specifying a savings of at least 3%. And the terms and features of said bonds, establishing certain parameters, which is the 3% for the sale of said bonds and enacting provisions incident related to the issuance, delivery, payment of, and security for such bonds.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept the ordinance of the City Council of the City of Montgomery, Texas, authorizing the insurance, the assurance of City of Montgomery, Texas, General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2021, specifying at least a savings of at least 3% of said bonds, establishing certain parameters of 3% for the sale of the said bonds, and enacting provisions incident and related to the issuance, delivery, payment of, and security for such bonds. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote, it is now open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the ordinance of the City Council of the City of Montgomery, Texas, authorizing the issuance of City of Montgomery, Texas, General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2021, specifying at least a savings of 3%, features of said bonds, establishing certain parameters of 3% for the sale of said bonds, and enacting provisions incident and related to the issuance, delivery, payment of, and security of such bonds, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the ordinance of the City Council of the City of Montgomery, Texas, authorizing the issuance of City of Montgomery, Texas, General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2021, specifying a savings of at least 3%, features of said bonds, establishing certain parameters of 3% for the sale of said bonds, enacting provisions incident and related to the issuance, delivery, payment of, and security for such bonds. Item number six on your agenda. Consideration of possible action regarding adoption of the resolution to approve grant application by the Montgomery Police Department for de-escalation training.
You'll find attached a copy of the proposed resolution for council to approve, for the police department to have, submit their grant application for de-escalation training. A copy of the funding announcement and the brochure for simulation equipment that would be purchased with funds from this grant is included. This simulation system will provide over 500 scenarios that can be controlled as they occur. This means as the scenario progresses, the trainer will have the capability to escalate or de-escalate the situation based upon the officer's judgment they apply in the active situation. The primary goal is to help officers be able to think more clearly.
The primary goal is to help officers be able to think more clearly and react and make better choices when it comes to de-escalating situations. This will help our officers with that extra layer of training to act with greater safety within the community. And, you know, like, you know, our police chief, is there anything else that you would like to go ahead to add, chief, or did I cover this adequately? I'll guess I'll go ahead and I covered that adequately enough for him. Is there any question on this information that's attached? I'll just, I'll also add, just make sure it's clear here. The, the grant, if awarded, would, would cover the full cost of this equipment with no sharing from the city.
And I'm sorry, I was, I was on mute. I just wanted to make one other note that even with those 500, with those 500 scenarios, with, with everything that's going on today, it also brings a, a better liability to the city. It reduces that. And then we mentioned that the city has not, doesn't have to spend any money on it. It's all great.
When's the last time, have we ever had this kind of training supplement?
I know, because these simulators are brought in and they're set up. Years ago, they were, they were approximately 20 to 30,000. This one's actually 42,000. We went out on a grant to get it. Many agencies doesn't have, they, they, they don't have these. I happen to come from some agencies that did. And it definitely takes down the liability of the police department and of the city. And it gives different scenarios where officers can understand shoot, not to shoot, how to de-escalate these situations without having to shoot. It adds, it adds a lot more training to, to what we're doing today.
With us not ever having any training, there's not, there's just a few guys still on the force from, from years ago that have some tenure here, and so they have not been through this training, so it probably be good. Since nobody's had the training on the force, we should at least have some training.
So chief, where, where exactly does the training take place?
This simulator will be, will be set up, we can set it up and we can take it down whenever we're training. We can set it up inside of the courtroom. It's, it comes with a full package where you can set the entire training on a wall. There's a lot of other aspects to it as far as the, the type of weapons. And it could be taken down again. But it's, it's a huge, it's a huge screen, which will cover probably one of the walls. Council chamber.
Where would it be stored?
We will store it in our locker room back here, with the only lock place that we have. More questions?
Let me add, I think, one important feature here, just to fully emphasize is if there's a situational changes in the policing world, maybe situations like we saw happen across the country last summer, you know, these can have new parameters entered so that our police force is able to keep up with potential changes to techniques that need to be implemented.
Well, if there's no more questions or comments or anything, I would like to make a motion to adopt resolution to approve the grant application by the Montgomery Police Department for de-escalation training.
Second.
And seconded, that we adopt the resolution to approve grant application by Montgomery Police Department for de-escalating train, de-escalation training. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of adopting a resolution to approve grant application for the Montgomery Police Department for de-escalation training, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will adopt a resolution to approve grant, to approve the grant application by the Montgomery Police Department for de-escalation training. Next item on your agenda is departmental reports. Number seven, city administrator's report for February 2021.
I know you have all the written reports there. I'm going to hit, hit some highlights from the staff level departmental reports here. And if you have any questions, obviously, go ahead and ask those as you have them. With regards to my, starting with my report overall, one of the key elements that we have coming out of the Arctic weather is to work on a greater levels of cooperative disaster planning. So we've been having, we've had several meetings with Montgomery Independent School District and Emergency Services District Number Two, and we're going to be continuing those as we work towards making sure we have a cooperative plan firmly in place between all of our agencies prepared to work together. So that if, if and when the next major emergency comes along, that we're greater prepared for that. One element coming out of that meeting is, those meetings are how to greater get across emergency messages to the public. And one thing I included following my written report is information on the Smart 911 system that's used by our county's 911 emergency system. It's also information access through Montgomery County's Ready MCTX app. And that's the format through which they put out, you know, emergency information from 911 and the county's Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. And signing up for that in format is entirely voluntary. What 911 system knows is that approximately 80% of their calls, and it's increasing, come from smartphones. And yet they get less information from smartphones than they get from a landline. So persons who sign up can choose what information they want 911 to see on that format. What we gain from that through 911 is the ability to send messaging out. So when we were putting out messages on the city's social media about a shelter, we, you know, if we were, had people registered through the system, we could have forced those messages out to users of cell phones in our area. And so this information is going to go out with this month's water bill. And it's the, it's, it's just the first reach that we have of being able to greater portray our message. It won't be the only, only method. But I want the city council to see this information ahead of it going out to the general public. As I said, it will be going out within the, within the upcoming water bills. Also want to report that the, that the hardware work for live streaming in the city council chamber that was approved last meeting. We should be have, that, that work should be done shortly by that company. We're on their schedule. At the moment, we're still expecting that we will be able to bring council back into the meetings here and live stream that out during April. And we, we're still expecting the first meeting of April. We'll keep council advised of that as we go forward. On the development report, you know, happy to continue to be able to report that both residential and commercial projects around the city, you know, continue to move forward. Generally speaking, we've been on a pace for a while of six to seven new homes a month being completed. And that continues this month, both in completion and in permitting for homes moving forward. The, you know, the ongoing projects in the city that have been previously approved in the utility system are underway. The engineer will provide an update on that in his report. And the downtown improvement plan is moving forward, and I expect an initial report to be made to the MEDC board, I believe sometime in May for that. And so that will continue to look forward. In Public Works, I'm happy to report they kept the facilities operating during the freeze, which was a lot of hard work on their part. In addition, they assisted with cots and blankets for shelter. They had follow-up repairs at the park after the freeze. And in the month of February at Fernland, they had 432 registered visitors and 31 tours. That is lower than average number, but yeah, certainly consistent with what we would expect in the month of February, especially with one week essentially locked out from heavy freeze weather. In the police department, you know, we're comparing the total calls for the month of February to the year prior. The calls for service were up 62%, although the other items were generally in the same range from the previous year. They had no major incidents to report. And April 28th, the Citizens Police Academy is planned to start. One specific item I want to make sure to touch on is on the police department webpage, they have a business watch form to request additional patrols or the ME, the police department be able to get a closer look on watching in certain specific commercial areas. Of course, for some time they've had the ability, if people are going on vacation for additional watches on residential homes. In the court, the court is mostly operating remotely for active court, and their daily activities are in person here at City Hall. And they've been hard at work since the court's systems allowed them to afford virtual activities. So they're working hard to catch up all the cases for the times they had to be down in 2020. On the utilities report, I'd like to note that the camera tracked the person, the developer behind that, they made $10,000 escrow payment. And you will see noted on First Hartford, a payment of $9,616.77. That was made as a fulfillment of a reimbursement portion for our 380 agreement with them. So that has been completed. And where I want to continue to say, we're continuing through the end of March to work with individuals who have freeze-related issues that caused additional water use on their water and wastewater charges. We're working with people on those accounts. So. And I also want to add to the utility report on the water accounts. We had 876 total accounts. That's up eight from the previous month. So that the growth of those utility accounts is consistently in line with the growth of homes. And I believe the police chief had something he specifically wanted to add, comment on his report. So I'd like to throw the floor over to him if he still wanted to make that comment, chief.
Yeah, absolutely. I just wanted to talk about the accidents and how they've gone down. And that's, a lot of that is due to citizens calling in and telling us about these hotspots that they've seen. And then the officers working those hotspots. Just about two months ago, we were, we were in, we were in double digits. And this month, it's, it's down to three, and it came down from that last month as well. So we're, we're steady cranking out that, that, that email so people can call us and tell us where those hotspots are. Because it's really brought our accidents down a whole lot. I just wanted to make that comment. Thank the citizens and the police officers for doing that.
And those are all departments that I was reporting on. So if anyone has questions for either myself or any of the department heads, be happy to take those.
So chief, they are using the website to report?
They are. And they're not only, and you'll find, you'll find that most people, they've seen it on the website, but they'll give us a call instead. So we're taking those calls, we're taking those calls as well. And actually, by taking those calls, I think when people see it on the website and they, they give us a call, we're actually able to get to those locations and, and start, and start looking and doing some traffic control. And it's, it's actually brought our accidents down a considerable amount, considerable amount, for sure.
That's awesome. All right. Well then.
Yeah, I think there's no other questions. We can send it to the H2L report for Michael.
Yep.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have your operations report for February 2021. This covers date range between January 18th and February 17th. Go to page two, we have your district alerts. We have four alerts to, to report. The first one was a blower failure where we ended up, we needed to replace the blower motor. And so that was on blower three. Those were original to the facility being built. So you did get a good lifespan out of that motor. On the second one, we had a leak on the, the temperature gauge on the, on the well header for water plant three. And then the bottom two are combination district issues from the, the freeze. We tried to put them all together to not fill up a two or three pages of this. On the page three, we have your wastewater plant flow detail. Flow for the month of February was 5,328,000 gallons. Daily peak flow was February 15th, 2021 at 303,000 gallons. The, as you'll see, between the 15th and 17th, that was an average flow due to being basically called out to every single plant to keep the water running, the sewer side. We had to do averages, but that's a direct result of people dripping faucets to keep lines from freezing up. So that's the reason for the above-average flow on those days. And your daily average flow for the month of February is 171,800 gallons, 43% of your permitted capacity. Page four is your discharge limitations. In affluent monitor report, all samples were in compliance for the month of February. Recorded a total of two and a half inches of rain. Page five is a water report. We recorded a total pumpage of 9,314,000 gallons, total flushing of 75,000 gallons. And a solid amount of 8,936,000 gallons, bringing us to a 97% accountability. And we also recorded 1,005 connections through your, your Badger Beacon system. On page six, we have a groundwater production chart with a 13-month history. And page seven is your water accountability chart with a 13-month history. That's all I had to report this month, unless council has any other questions.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. All right. Next up, the financial report. Mr. Lasky.
Okay, 15 and 16 are both mine, so I'll go ahead and cover both of those at the same time. We'll start with item number 15 and going on, and going to page number three of the, of my report, which is 179 on, on the report posted. It is your account balances. For your general fund, you have a total of eight months reserve. And going to the next page, page 180 on there is for your MEDC, you have two years' worth of reserve. And your utility fund, 11 months' worth of reserve. Your cash flow for your general fund checking on page 181, a couple of notes on there. You did receive two deposits for home grants. These were for the 605 MLK Drive home grant. There'll be one more deposit that we did receive in March that'll show in your next report, and that was just for administrative fees for grant works for all of the home grants that were, that were done. And the other big item on your financial report is the sales tax that was collected. It was just over 450,000. On page number 182, 182, you'll see the expenditures that were also on there for the 94,008.15 and 10,535. Sorry, my video was not on. Sorry about that. Moving on to page number 11 on your report, which is page 187 on the, on, online. We did receive a grand total of of the 450,337,560 of it is for your general fund. Rest of it transferred to your MEDC. We received for the month of March, total, which will show next month, a grand total of just over 306,000, which is outstanding. Highest I've seen on a non-quarterly month. So that's really awesome. We did update the transfers that were made from the MEDC for the festivals and the events that were done from December and January for Christmas parade, light up the park, shot with the cop, Montgomery, I'm sorry, not that one. And government naming contest. So those revenues and expenditures offset. For the most part, there'll be a few more revenues on that side than expenditures. But those have been up to date as of, as of current. Just a couple of notes on the, on the expenditures, one of them being on page 189 of your packet. Um, one of them being on page one eighty-nine of your packet. Um, on the accounting fees, uh just. Uh, we're a little over budget on that. The reason for that is because um your capital asset schedules were done and it's a usually a once-a-year type of fee. That's done in correlation with your audit. And so that won't, as I said, that won't show up again until next year. Um, another note, page number one ninety in your packet, um for computer technology. Um, the bulk of that expense is because of the live, is from the livestream setup uh that'll be taking place, I believe, going forward. And let's see, the only other note that I have is going to be on your utility fund. Which is going to be page number two seventeen of your packet. And there were some more lift station fourteen repairs as well as the fence that was being constructed at the sewer plant. Those are all the notes um that I see there. And then page, and then the final page of that report just shows that you did indeed pay. Your um bonds that were due on February twenty-eighth. And your next payment will be due just in interest only on September first.
Anthony, I didn't see anything for our P P R, our CARES Act money. Do we have a line for that of what? We're looking to get back that we put out. We didn't put anything up, but there are things there, items that we can put under that to get money back. Are we calculating that anywhere here? I didn't see it.
Um, I know Richard and I had discussed it a little bit. We had come up with about fifteen thousand that we, that we had um, that we saw on that. But I haven't heard anything back, um unless, Richard, you've heard anything back um from them on that.
So we would just put that line item in there. We, well, it's already, money already spent. So I guess when we get it back, we would just put it as a regular deposit in the general?
Yes, yeah, I would, what I would do is put it as a, as another income item and it would show.
Okay, all right. Richard, have you heard a target date? Richard, you're on mute.
You're on mute.
Thank you. Uh, just to follow up, I add there, I did follow up with the uh, with the county. As of two weeks ago, they hadn't uh made action, but I'm expecting to follow up with them in about the next week.
Well, I guess they'll let us know of what we submitted qualified, since that seems to be the.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
And then um for item number sixteen, which is just your quarterly investment report. Um, this is just a summary of all of the interest and transactions that have taken place from October first through. Uh, December thirty-first of twenty twenty. And it just has um all of that for your money markets with Tex Pool. Along with any CDs. And we um did in fact purchase a couple of CDs, which you'll show, which will show on your next report. Um, for the April uh meeting. And it also includes your pledged securities um that we also show on a quarterly basis.
Uh, does anybody have any questions for Anthony? All right, we'll move on to item number seventeen. Thank you, Anthony. City Engineering for February twenty twenty-one. Chris?
Good evening, everybody. Uh, starting on page two twenty-eight of your packet is our report. I will go through the items and just stop me if you have questions. First item on there is the downtown waterline replacement project that I'm sure everyone has noticed is underway. Uh, they did, I think we're, last month they reported they completed a lot of the work by Cedar Break Park. Uh, currently they're working all up and down Pond Street, so it's a bit of a mess at the moment. Uh, but they will get that cleaned up as soon as they can. And they've been making so far so good, good progress on the project and, and good to work with. Uh, we did have two passments since your last meeting, passment number one and two, and total amount of about a hundred and sixty-four thousand. It's about twenty percent or so of the contract. And their contract period performance ends on June thirteenth. So is when we expect them are, is when their contract time ends uh for the project. So. So far, they're still on schedule and uh no, no major issues. Moving on to page two of our report, uh the C D V G projects, we talked about those earlier in the meeting. Uh, the phase two, which was the work that was past Baja Road closer to McGinnis in that area. Uh, there's no punches items at the final inspection. There was one punches item uh further south. There's some erosion around some driveways. Uh, that they did some culvert work, so they were going back to get that cleaned up. Uh, and then that will be ready to close out as well. Uh, water plant number three improvements, uh those contracts are in your attorney's hands. He's reviewing those. And then once those are reviewed, Hilson, and we get his okay, uh we can move forward with proceeding with that project. On the G L O, uh in addition to what we have listed on our report, we did have a meeting with the property owner. Uh, where the proposed detention pond would be this past month to talk through some options and. Uh, the donation of the property and kind of how that could potentially work. And we seem to be. At least working toward a meanable solution to be able to get uh that property for the detention pond over there off of Pleasant Morgan. Uh, behind that existing. So uh moving forward, that one in that kind of the, the land acquisition component of it is, has some movement. Lift station number one damages, there's no real update. Uh, we had a call with the charity company's attorney uh this week. Uh, excuse me, last week to discuss kind of, we've hit a, a point where we're not getting any further. So. That was uh city staff, your attorney, us, and the surety's attorney were all in that line uh to try to work out. Uh, the issues and get the project closed out. So uh, we're still working through that portion. And then we've talked about uh the Atkins Creek project earlier on the agenda as well. On the development side of things, uh one ongoing plan review is Panda Express. Uh, we did receive their revised plans back on Friday of this past week. Uh, so we'll be getting those back to them this week. Uh, as a reminder, this is coming in next to Starbucks uh on the Montgomery Shop site between Chick-fil-A and McCoy's. Uh, also, if you notice, I don't have it on here, but Autozone has finally started construction on the McCoy site. Uh, that's one that, you know, they. Their plans have been approved for, for quite some time, but they were holding out on getting started with construction uh for a variety of reasons, but they're finally underway.
Chris, for a second, were we able to get a, a better aesthetically pleasing outer shell?
I don't know. I need to, we don't review those plans as far as the, the building sides and the building exterior goes. Uh, we can follow up with Rick and Dave and see what came out of that uh from the building envelope side.
I'd love to see.
I don't, I don't know.
Okay, thanks.
Plat reviews are ongoing. The Peel Junction Investments, just because that's a name that y'all probably don't recognize. That is on uh Old Plantersville Road just south of the railroad tracks. It's uh that kind of. Odd-shaped skinny piece of property right up against the railroad on the north side of the street. Uh, they're plating that property this. So it's going through the process. One of the interesting things on that is, as they're going through, they found. That their property line actually, according to records, included a portion of the road. Um, so they are donating that right away, are granting that right away as part of this. So we'll actually have the full right-of-way width in that area. Hills of Town Creek, section four, uh which y'all took action on last meeting, I believe it was. That has been signed, is in the process of getting routed around and recorded. Page three of our report, uh two more plats, Town Creek Crossing and Montgomery Shops amending plot. This amending plot is just to adjust the property lines for Panda Express. Ongoing construction items, uh Hills of Town Creek four and Town Creek Crossing, section one. Obviously, both of those are underway. Uh, we do actually have a final inspection, or at least a first final inspection for Hills of Town Creek, section four tomorrow. Uh, so we walk into site and confirming that all of that was done per the plans and is acceptable. As well as we'll also be looking at the Hills of Town Creek, section three, and Emma's Way warrant, the items all at the same time uh tomorrow morning. And then finally, the last couple of items we have, uh Town Creek and one forty-nine, that rip wrap is still being scheduled to be installed. Uh, Tesla confirmed they have the materials, but they just haven't had a chance to get out there due to some staffing issues. Uh, but they will uh hear, he's hopeful in the next couple of weeks. Camera tracked as uh Richard already mentioned, we did have a meeting with uh precinct one, first of the month to go over the. Uh, proposed thoroughfare alignment changes. Uh, additionally, we've had some follow-up conversations with the county. And the county's consultant for the thoroughfare, uh thoroughfare plan update that they're going through. To make sure that all of the, what the city has on the list is also included uh with the update. And finally, page four, uh Atkins Creek and ten ninety-seven, the text dot project. So we've had a couple of calls with text dot regarding right-of-way and easement acquisition. So we're working through that process. Again, this project is still scheduled to let in twenty twenty-six, so it's not supposed to, it doesn't have funding committed yet. But text that's wanting to have all the work done in advance. So if there's funding available, they can make the project happen sooner. Turn lane on one oh five and one forty-nine is still scheduled to be let uh the first part of this year. Uh, we don't have an exact date, but the last I saw was, I think they're trying to bid the project in April uh to do that. And then the last one, this was kind of a follow-up from last meeting. Sorry, my screen just blanked. It's the ten ninety-seven uh speed study that we talked about. So we had a call with text dot and we talked about the study uh with staff and kind of some options and ways to go about that, either by requesting. Uh, via, you know, a resolution and getting some other support for text dot to do it. Kind of at, at their timeline versus kind of putting together scope, what it would cost uh for the city to undertake that as well. So we're. Still working through that with staff, uh but we'll probably have more of an update here in the next coming weeks on a proposed path. On getting that done. Just as a reminder, what this was, was looking at really from the city limits to one forty-nine along ten ninety-seven. With the, the speed and the, you know, the volume of the traffic coming through there and how to improve the safety uh of that. And that is all I have, unless you have any questions for me. Okay, turn.
Richard, you had something?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I uh had two things I left off. One was off of my report. I know I had mentioned, I think each of the last two months that I was taking vacation at the end of March. And I did, I did want to very, very specifically say that uh, you know, uh from uh tomorrow through uh. I'll be back, I'll be on vacation and I'll be back the Monday immediately following Easter. And then also, while going through the departmental reports, I completely skipped the sales tax report and I. Do have Ryan Fortner here tonight to uh give the presentation on that. That's agenda item number nine in your packet.
That's an exciting report, too.
It's always easier when we have good news.
That's exactly right. Breaking records, good stuff.
Be quiet.
I'm sorry, was that Ryan? Is he not on?
I thought, I saw him on here a bit ago. Let me text him real quick.
I don't see him on.
He must have, uh, well, he must have had to drop off for some reason. In any case, uh you have, you have the item, the uh. The report in there. I'll communicate back with uh him about getting him back here, but yeah, one of the upcoming meetings. A lot of the information is self-explanatory. If you look on page five of his report, which is page one forty-seven in the packet. You see the list of the top twenty-five sales tax filers over the most recent twelve months. And uh this information is through March twenty twenty-one, so you know, starting April one twenty twenty through. You know, March twenty twenty-one. And so, and, and that's the list of the top twenty-five. The next page, page six of his report, shows the uh top twenty-five sales tax filers for the month of February twenty twenty-one. Which is one of the quarterly filing months. Some of the larger filers, uh Kroger would be one of those. They only file on a quarterly basis, so some of the monthly reports, uh you won't have some of those names, but uh. Yeah, and then uh page seven, you know, uh shows uh by comparison. You know, month, uh January twenty twenty-one and uh, which is a non-quarterly month and February twenty twenty-one. You know, being a uh quarterly filing month. So. Uh, sorry, we appear to have some technical issues on his end, so uh. I will re-coordinate back with him about getting him back here for a future report, but I apologize for skipping that earlier. Yes, I just got into a rhythm and I rolled right past that one. So I think, and I think that concludes all of the departmental reports.
If no one has any questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the departmental report as presented.
Second.
It is removed and seconded that we accept the departmental reports as presented. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires a majority vote, open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the departmental reports as presented, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will accept the departmental reports as presented. Uh, the next time a business is executive session and there's nothing on our agenda this evening.
I don't have anything that's come up for that either, Mayor.
Okay, good. And then the next one is council inquiry. I have two, if anybody has any uh, go free. Okay, uh, Richard, I have a question. Uh, is there, um, are we currently in any lawsuits for misappropriation of funds or anything? I, I, I said, I read through our audit report and it says everything is great. I just wanted to double check to make sure.
I've not adv- you know, I'm not been advised of any such items, so I'm not sure where you would get that information. Uh, certainly, I would think if a lawsuit had been filed against the city, I as the city administrator would be the one receiving that paper and. If not me, certainly the city attorney. And I've not been advised. Alan, have you heard anything like that?
No, not at all.
Okay, I was asked a question this weekend, so I thought I would ask. All right, great. And um Susan, I want to give a great job on the agenda. I like this new format.
Thank you very much.
Easy to follow.
Yeah, very nice. Love it.
Great, I'm glad y'all like it. It's, it's going to be a lot smoother. There's several other features that. Uh, will be added eventually um that come with the program that will show uh council voting. So. It's, it's a real nice program.
Growing up. Okay, and then this weekend also is Montgomery Mudbug Music Festival in front of Ransoms uh beginning at one, one to ten. It's going to be exciting. Uh, there's over twelve thousand people that uh have said they're interested or going, so. Looking forward to.
I'll be home for it. I said, I'll be home for it finally, but I'm zooming today from.
Good. All right, I think we'll see, hopefully we'll see a big uh boost in revenue for uh all the businesses downtown. Restaurants, including Tom. I'd love to hear, Tom, what your uh, if you, what your response is, if you are on a ten-hour wait, that'd be great.
Yeah, we, we only take reservations right now to, to prevent that, so.
Okay.
It's, it's hard to take walk-ins right now.
And that's a good problem to have. All right, hmm, if there's nothing else, uh I'll entertain a motion.
One thing, I'm going to ask Richard, uh, what was the outcome of them catching that dog that was loose in the community? Did they catch it?
They did catch the dog. Uh, they, they, well, let's say, let's say, uh, one of the kids over there actually caught the dog. And uh, what they call animal control the next morning, and they came over and got the dog. So the dog was friendly with some people, but uh the animal control people just couldn't catch it. But yeah, they, they eventually got it.
Okay, right. I heard some people calling about it and said they didn't know it was a wild dog loose in the community. Yeah, it's a.
Yeah, it actually belonged to uh someone there who was out of town and the dog got away, but uh. He was trying to get to one of the girl dogs over on the other side and that's eventually what he caught.
Okay, that's uh, thanks.
And Mayor.
Make that motion?
If I might, real quick.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you might see on your screen Caleb Villarreal. Uh, he's with my office. He's a attorney that's uh started with us this month. Uh, he's got some experience with the municipal law, so he's going to be a good.
Uh he's got some experience with the municipal law, so he's going to be a good asset for our firm. Um just wanted to ask him to sit in and and, you know, we're we're taking him around to our clients, basically, to let him meet everybody. Uh and just wanted to let you know, if you see that name, he's he's with our office. Uh he's he's uh already been a great asset to us, so.
Fantastic. So will he be taking your spot and on some meetings?
Uh he may show up from time to time, but but uh not a real plan for that now, just really just introducing him around. Um I can see that uh I need to start wearing a tie again because he's making me look like a slob, but.
Nice to meet you, Caleb. Welcome.
Uh nice to meet you all. I look forward to working with you.
Fantastic. All right, Mr. Lacy, I think you were making a motion.
Still like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It is removed and seconded that we adjourn this meeting. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and it is seven eleven, and we will adjourn this meeting. Have a great week, everyone. Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Thanks.